We are going to get started. We now have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So we are going to go ahead and start with this work session. Hold on one moment. So ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and get started with this work session. If I can ask all board members to please come to the table. So we are running a few minutes late. Hold on one moment. So we're going to go ahead and get started on the discussion regarding the memorandum of understanding between Fairfax County Public Schools and the Fairfax County Police Department for the School Liaison Commander and School Resource Officer Program. I do want to kind of set the tone for this with the board that this is the result of an ongoing discussion between the Police Department and public schools for an administrative agreement between the two agencies governing how the interaction, the roles and responsibilities of SROs versus administrators and school staff. In advance of this work session, I want to thank both Superintendent Braybrand as well as Chief Rosler and the staffs of both FCPS and FCPD for the collaborative effort that they have undertaken in really taking a fresh look at the MOU and with the excellent support and input from a number of community advocates which were put together by Chairman Bulova. And so this MOU is the result of that collaborative process. And all the board members will know that there were, there was some additional language changes which address a concern which was raised in the last meeting of that community group. And I want to thank the staff that worked over the weekend to address the concerns that were raised at that time. At this time, I would like to turn the mic over to Acting Superintendent, Mr. Smith, and you can provide further detail. I will say that the objective tonight is to have a discussion of this document with an adoption of the document on Thursday evening. This document is on for an administrative approval for the Board of Supervisors. And the language in it has been negotiated and approved by both FCPD and FCPS staff at this point.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And you did an excellent job of teeing everything up. It's, excuse me. We're bringing to you this evening the final draft of the SRO MOU that we've been working on for almost a year now. We began this process in August of 2017. There were some concerns in the community, specifically within NAACP, with concerns with the language in the MOU, and brought those concerns to our attention. And so at that time, we reached out to Fairfax County Police Department and engaged in this year-long process to revise the MOU. When we got to the end of that process, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors Sharon Bulova then pulled together a committee of stakeholder groups to actually review the MOU and provide input to the MOU. We had three meetings during the month of July to do that work. I was able to attend each of those meetings, and we were able to get good feedback on the language of the MOU. We got feedback about the format, and we're able to then bring it back and mirror this particular document on the state school and law enforcement partnership. And so you can see that there is some major changes from the original MOU to the current MOU. As the agenda item focuses, points out that we've established clear divisions between the role of the SRO in schools and school administration. We are clarifying the SROs are not involved in determining student discipline under the SRNR. We've removed some language that was particularly outdated language, given that we're in different environment, a different time. And so we've removed a lot of references, and you'll see some of those changes in the MOU. And we've added some focus on a lot of the training that will be necessary for our SROs as they move forward within the school environment. And as Ms. Corbett-Sanders says, we have a tight timeline on this. And really, we want to be able to use this document as we embark upon the first joint training that we've had with school-based administrators and our SROs in the history of the program. We'd like to have an updated MOU to start that process rather than start the training with the current MOU because we feel that the language is so much better. Now, it's important to point out that this is a living document, and we realize that after the several robust meetings that we've had with our community stakeholder groups, we realize that the document isn't perfect. But we do know that we've made some substantial changes to the document and feel like it gives us a good starting point. And then would certainly be able to review the document at a later date so that we could move forward and make recommendations for any future iterations of the document. So at that, I know that several board members have had a chance to review the document. I don't know if we necessarily wanted to go through it. It's hard to go through it without showing the old document and the new to look at specific changes. But I do know that board members may have already reviewed the document and have some particular questions about the language that's in the document.
Before we take, before we take questions, and I know Ms. Hines has indicated she wants to speak to it, I think it's going to be important for people to also understand that this document is going to be used in training in two weeks' time. And that the Chief Rosler and Superintendent Braybrand have also committed to doing a number of things, which include the development of an FAQ and some instructional videos. And could you go into detail about what else has been agreed to as a complementary activity to the MOU? Because the MOU is really structured as an administrative agreement between the schools and FCPD.
Yes, so this is really an administrative document. It's a document that's available to the public, but it isn't written as a public document. It's an agreement as to how we will work together and partner as organizations to keep our schools safe. When we were engaged with our stakeholder groups and based on the feedback that we received from them, we realized that there were times when parents and students didn't know necessarily what their rights were with regard to engaging with the SRO within the school building, if they were questioned, if they were, some of the language is detained. And so we want to make sure that we provide answers to questions that our community members might have around what to do in those situations and model some of the videos on the videos that we currently have that provide information to students on what to do if you're pulled over in an automobile by a police officer. You could then use that same model for what do you do if this situation happens and you're asked by an SRO to engage in an interview? What are the rights of parents if they're called and the SRO explains that they need to interview a student? What are the rights for the parent? What kind of permissions would they have to give? So those are the kinds of supporting documents and supporting resources that we would provide to schools and to the community to help explain some of the information that's within the MOU. And we do think that the FAQ will go a long way at answering a lot of the questions that community members might have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I have Ms. Hines, followed by Ms. Evans and Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Okay, yeah, well, thank you. And I also, I really appreciate the work that everyone's done on this. I did sit in on the first community meeting of the three that were held at the Government Center. And so I've seen the improvement in this document from what we started with, and it is significant. I think this is a much better document. And I, just as a general thing, I think school resource officers are done properly are a really great part of community policing. And I think if we can continue to do it well, it is something we should continue to do. So given that, my goal is to be able to support this on Thursday night so that you can take it forward. There are a few things, and I think we probably all may feel like there are a few things that we'd like to at least talk about tonight, maybe put into follow-on motions so that those ongoing conversations that people are referring to are more explicit and have sort of an end time for when we will hear back on those things. I think that doing any kind of amendment to this document right now is going to be very difficult. I mean, if we really feel like we have to, I guess maybe we could get it done, but I worry about being able to practically get that done. So just a few things that, I sent an email around to the board, if anybody, I don't know if people had a chance to look at it. And I had, one question that I had that I wanted to maybe get some answers on, I'll try to go through this quickly. Page six on training. I noticed that it says initial training of the SRO. I had a question. I don't see another place in the document where it talks about training. So I'm concerned that we're only dealing with initial training. And I, so I'd like, maybe as a follow-on, I'll say that I would like the, I would like the board to get a report on all of the training modules and how frequently they're given and that sort of thing. I think that could be a future report that the board should get. But also, if there is one small change we could make in here, the first sentence is "Officers selected for the SRO program will receive the following training." Shall is a stronger word. I don't know if everybody who drafted the document is okay with making that change. But one of the things that I know community members were concerned about is that there was a, there was conversation about how, well, of course, the SROs have training, but it was never said that they shall, you know? And I kind of feel like a stronger statement. If people are okay with making that change, I might offer that amendment. The second thing is SROs, and this is just a, I'm not sure what to do about this. SROs discussing law enforcement-related issues with students as separate conversations from the administrative conversation that happened. And let me just tell you, so I had a conversation with one of my high school principals, and I said, "So walk me through what happens. The administrator has had a conversation with a student about a discipline issue. The administrator believes there's a law enforcement issue as well." At that point, the administrator refers the law enforcement issue and the student to the SRO. And then I asked the principal, "Does that next conversation with the SRO and the student happen in the same room with the administrator still there?" And her answer was that yes, that often happens. And so I asked, "Well, wouldn't it be better if that happened separately just to keep that wall between law enforcement and disciplinary matters?" And so I was going to propose that we require that, but I think then an issue came up, and I was talking to Ms. Corbett-Sanders about how there are parents who would like to have some sort of helper with the student in the conversation with the SRO. So this is probably another follow-on that I might have, which is, you know, can we discuss further how we make sure that there is a pretty bright line between administrative discipline conversations and law enforcement SRO conversations? And, you know, how do we just maybe make that a little bit more of a wall? And then another thing that I think needs to be a follow-on is there is, there is provision in this MOU for a report to the community on data. I would like to see that spelled out, what is that? And that it should be, I think it should be on the website. It should be a page on our website, a page on the county website that breaks down arrest, juvenile arrest data, disaggregates it by, you know, socioeconomic status and geography. And I think that we have the same sort of data scorecard going up for FCPS on discipline. I think that's going to be part of our equity scorecard. If it's not, it should be. But I, you know, I think my concern is that we might get a report, sort of a narrative, many pages report on law enforcement data on ju, you know, from the SRO program. But I would like to see that easily accessible on our website, disaggregated, so that people in the community can find it. Because one of the things that's become clear in this conversation is we have advocacy groups who have had FOIA to get information, and that is not a great way to get good information. And then you find that there's a dispute between the advocates and the county. And, you know, we, as public servants, we control the data. So I think it behooves us to prevent those kind of disputes and disagreements by making the data very clear and publicly available. So I would, I'm definitely going to have a follow-on, asking that we have some sort of a scorecard on the website, on our website and the county website that shows all this data that we're going to be getting out of the SRO program under this. So finally, I'm almost done. On ICE agents, and this has come up, and I know other people will want to talk about it, so I won't take too much time. I think the, I think, you know, the fear is that an SRO may legitimately have information about a student, that they gleaned from talking to a student about a potential arrest situation, you know, potential law enforcement situation. The law enforcement situation doesn't necessarily go any further, or it's dismissed, you know? So it's, it sort of ends in the student's life. But the information that the SRO gleaned from that conversation with the student lives on in FCPD somewhere. And because FCPD works collaboratively with ICE, that somehow ICE could get information from FCPD that they could not get from the school system, that they, you know, and that, just, for example, you know, a kid is talking about where my dad works, right? And dad is somebody that ICE is looking for. And now ICE knows where dad works. I mean, that's the sort of information that I think people in the community are concerned could end up getting into ICE hands through SROs. And I don't know if that's covered in this MOU. And what I want to ask is, what would be the downside of just saying that FCPD will never give FCPS student information to ICE agents under any circumstances? That if ICE agents want that information, they have to come to the school system and do it that way? So that is actually a question. Would there be any downside to just saying, absolutely, bright line, FCPD will never give ICE information about FCPS students?
So I know we have someone from the SRO organization here. The question is, are you the right person to answer this? Or no, okay. Mr. Smith, I know that Chief Rosler felt that the governing, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So in some conversations that we've had with the chief around the, sort of the governing guidelines at the, and guidance that the police force uses, the Police Department uses, it's really focused on the interactions with ICE for criminal cases and criminal situations and not for those administrative or civil-type situations. And so their guidance is that they do not assist ICE in any type of civil or administrative review or case. Now, if it were a criminal instance, that's a different, a different story. And so if there were a criminal situation or a situation where students or staff or members of the community would be in imminent danger or harm, that is another area where they have some leeway. But really, for those, what you're talking about is really more of an administrative or a civil use of those powers and not necessarily a criminal.
And Mr. Smith, it's on page 16 of the document.
And so, and I was getting ready to direct to page 16 of the document. We've made some changes there at the document, and you'll note that in the first, or the paragraph under court orders, subpoenas, and search warrants, we've added some information that school officials may only disclose student records in response to lawfully issued court orders, subpoenas, and search warrants. And so adding that only there, before it was that school officials may disclose student records. And so adding the only is, provides a little bit more specificity on when we can do that. And you'll note then we have an addition from the Police Department that FCPD officers are not agents of the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, and as such, they shall not, there's that word, shall, shall not participate in any request for assistance that is not of a criminal nature within the Fairfax County Public Schools. And so it is addressed in that portion. And then lastly, you'll note in the next paragraph down, we've added that notice shall be provided to the FCPS Division Council's office, who will coordinate with law enforcement and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office as appropriate whenever there are these types of requests. And so you have in that statement what we're required to do, what FCPD will and will not do, and then how we'll respond if any of those requests come our way.
Because I'll finish up because I know other people want to speak. But so the scenario that I described, a kid is talking to an SRO about a criminal thing, right? And during that conversation, the SRO is taking notes, and the child discloses some information about his or her family members, where they live, where they work, who they are, right? If later ICE wants to work with FCPD in the gang task force, and they have that information about that kid or that kid's family, it's a criminal matter? Are they not going to hand that over to ICE as part of that criminal investigation? I mean, that's, that's the fear. And if I can't go back to the community and say, "No, absolutely, that's not something you have to worry about," then we have a problem because our kids need to know that school is a safe place to come. They need to know that SROs are safe people to talk to. And right now, ICE is not a safe organization for our community. It is not. And I think to the extent that we can prevent, to the extent that we can clarify, make absolutely clear and certain for our community that they are safe coming to school and talking to SROs and talking to administrators, that there's no way their personal information will end up somehow with ICE, we need to be able to do that.
Mr. Smith, do you want to respond to that? Or are you suggesting?
Sir.
I think, you know, I do think other people want to talk about it. And we have, we have information, and maybe other people have ideas that I don't have. So I'm willing to listen at this point.
Okay. So I'm going to call on Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamara, and Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Palchuk, and Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I will start by saying that I do think that this is a major step forward from where we were with our MOU, both in the past and in the original draft that I saw. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into making those significant improvements. I will agree with Ms. Hines that we do, it is, it is regrettable, and I understand the reasons for it. It is regrettable that we have such a quick turnaround time for such an important document, that 21-page document, that we're sorting through some, some language that, it makes, language makes a difference here. So I understand we need to get it done because we need to have something in place for August 28th, when school starts. But with, with the ICE issue, the, we have been told that schools are still the sensitive locations, that ICE isn't going to come in. However, we need to be able to assure our residents that their kids are safe coming to school, that we are not going to be turning over information to ICE. So I do think we need to get clarity. I appreciate the addition that we put in just today. That's an important addition. One of the things that was raised was would somebody, would a, would a principal, would an SRO know the difference between one kind of a document and another? One that's a legitimate request for information, not that we, one that is a court order? And so my question here, and I guess this is to you, Mr. Smith, is we hope ICE agents don't come to our door?
So what I can say is that, that we have not had an instance where an ICE agent has visited any of our schools in Fairfax County. So I want to share that, that we unequivocally have not had that happen.
I think that's important information, and we also need to be prepared in case they do.
And then in the future, so in case they do, you'll note the, the section that's added that those principals would then contact Division Council's office, where they would get guidance from the Division Council on how to move forward with any kind of formal warrant from a judge or a subpoena.
So they would, they are going to be trained and told, "You must do that first."
Yes.
No matter what they present to you, okay.
Yes.
Well, I appreciate that. Between now and Thursday, I don't know if there are other forms of clarity that we can come up with, whether it's an amendment or whether it's a follow-on motion. But, you know, I would welcome ideas from my colleagues on, on ways just to further clarify it for our community because I do think that's an important issue. I wanted to go on now to, I have a couple, actually several questions on page 16. This goes to the, to the issue of parent notification. And I believe that the requirements here are significantly more stringent than what we have now in our SRNR. And so I am wondering if some of this language, if we shouldn't make our SRNR and our parent notification parallel to this. So I would ask as a, as a next step, and not as an amendment to this agreement, but as a next step to, for staff to do a comparison between the parent notification outlined here. It does, it's, it's strong language here, and it's stronger, I believe, than what we have, pretty, significantly stronger in terms of having to contact parents right away. You know, several years ago, we drew one bright line, and it was before the written statement. And I think some of us have come to believe we need to, to draw a different line or at least address this. So I would like that to be a next step, if, if my colleagues agree. We might want to consider simply adopting this language. Wouldn't that be nice if we had a parallel approach to parent notification? On page 17, under searches, school officials, there's a, it talks about reasonable suspicion and SRO searches. It talks about probable cause. Can I get some clarity on the difference between reasonable suspicion and probable cause? I don't know, I don't know who I'm asking that of. I may be asking legal counsel.
I think that might be for Mr. Foster.
Mr. Foster, he's, is...
You know, obviously, there's a different legal, legal standard applied to administrators when they're acting in a civil capacity. And so I'm looking here, "School officials may conduct searches of students' property in person under their jurisdiction where reasonable suspicion exists." They're acting in an administrative civil capacity in that context. With regard to SRO searches, there's a higher standard, and that's probable cause.
So probable cause is a higher standard?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Well, that's, that's, all right. So now we talk about when, some of this has to do, parent notification, I'm now on page 18. And it's talking about arrests and parent notification in connection with arrests. But I gather that does not, charges don't constitute arrests, right? So wherever it talks about what an SRO must do in the case of an arrest of a student, if they're, because we, we see in our discipline cases where students are charged with something, but that doesn't constitute an arrest, correct? I guess I'm looking at you again, Mr. Foster.
It does not always. I mean, the mere issuance of criminal charges is not the same as an arrest.
So any place where I see in here the word arrest, it wouldn't necessarily apply to cases where the SRO was filing charges?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Again, that's, that's, that's something for us to look at. I have a few more questions, but I'm going to let, I'm going to move on because I know I've taken up time. But thank you.
So before we continue on with colleagues' questions, I did want to make sure everybody in the audience knows that the document up on the screen is the document which was posted late in the day to our board docs. So if you would like to see it, you can go onto our board docs and view the document as well. And I also want to, for those who came in after the beginning of this meeting... And I also want to, for those who came in after the beginning of this meeting, let people know that both Ms. Darrenak Kofax, who is at the State Symposium on Equity, and Mr. McElveen, who is out of the country on business, send their regrets, but they are going to watch this video later. So they'll see any comments we have around the board and are very interested in this subject. So I'm going to continue on with Ms. Keys-Gamara, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to thank everybody who's worked so hard. This document has come a long way, and I very much am grateful. Since we have been referred to this page, this is one up on the screen here, I did have a question about this notification to the parents. The SRO shall take immediate steps to notify the juvenile's parents, guardian, or responsible adult that the juvenile is in custody. I didn't see any language with respect to taking statements and whether that is also in line with, are we notifying the parent after we take a statement? Or are we, it doesn't, it's not clear to me. I'm just wondering if someone, I believe it should be that the SRO is not only taking the child in custody and not taking a statement, but that statement, this language doesn't say that. So can somebody clarify that for me? No?
Give us a moment here.
Well, okay. I was about to say, I'd be happy to give you a moment.
17. So Ms. Keys-Gamara, the issue of investigation and questioning of students is addressed at page 17.
Okay.
And I think that the answer to your question is here in the second paragraph under investigation and questioning. It says, "SROs shall seek the consent authorization, approval or denial of the legal guardian before conducting any interview of the student."
Perfect. Thank you. I'm sorry I missed that. I just wanted to make sure because that doesn't say it, but I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. So I also, just in general, and you guys may know where this is, but I have a note about access with respect to directory information to outside entities. And I'm not sure that that is, is that going through the process, Mr. Smith? Is that going through the typical process where we would have to contact the FCPS before that could happen, and there would have to be a criminal matter for that to happen? I think that we have to assure the community that those directories are not available in general.
Well, and there is a section on directory information, and the information that we can share with regard to directory information is much less than it has been in the past. And so it's on page 15, if you notice here in the document. You can see that this is the information that maybe is disclosed to the FCPD. And it's bulleted there to highlight student's name, participation in activities, height, weight, birth date, attendance record, degrees, awards, and honors, school and grade, photographs and other images, name of parent and guardian and individual with whom the student lives. And this says, "address, telephone number, and parent email addresses." But we've, we're making some changes to the addresses piece, and so we want to make sure that we clarify this. Because I know that we're focused on, as we've reached out to PTAs and focusing on the email addresses that are part of directory information for families, that they feel that that's a fine piece to have for directory information because it's the major way that the PTAs are contacted now by, or parents are contacted by PTAs. But I can get some clarity on this last piece for addresses and telephone number.
Actually, I think Mr. Foster has some additional information based on legislation that was passed this past spring, that he, on directory information. So you might want him to answer that.
Well, let me just make sure he has all my questions before we, because I wanted to ask not only what information could be released, but under what circumstances? Okay?
Yeah. So there was a significant change in Virginia law made in the last session of the General Assembly, went into effect July 1st. And specifically what that is, is now parents need to opt into authorizing the release of their address, telephone number, and email address. Okay? So if a parent does not do that, that information, address, telephone number, email address, cannot be released.
To third parties, period.
Correct, because it's not considered directory information.
Okay. So the information that we consider directory information, are there parameters for even FCPD to get that information?
Yes. And so the MOU at page 15 outlines what directory information is, with that important change that I just mentioned a second ago. And then more generally, on page 16, it talks about in the MOU that school officials may only disclose student records in response to lawfully issued court orders, subpoenas, and search warrants. Okay? So those are two areas where the release of information is controlled in the MOU.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So I do have some additional information, I'll put this in the form of a question. On page 2, it talks about the evaluation of the school law enforcement partnership and their gathering data with respect to student discipline data, incident reports, et cetera, the Fairfax County Youth Survey. Is that intra-FCPD information that's being shared? Is that information being shared with the school board? How is that? I may not understand the various entities with all the acronyms, et cetera. If somebody can help me understand how this information is utilized.
I think if you look at, if you also look at page 11, there's some information about completing real-time data on all SRO actions. And so as I think about how this information will be shared, it will be available to the public, it will be shared on public websites, and also reviewed annually. And so these are the, a few of the data points that we would be tracking, but it's a little more specific on page 11. And that also gets to some of what Ms. Hines was asking about earlier with regard to the data, how it will be reported. And I think that as we think about reporting it and where it would live, that it could also live on our Equity Scorecard as well.
Okay. And I would assume that the school board would be getting reports on these various?
Oh, certainly. Certainly.
All right. Okay. So I want to go to the initial training of SROs, which I'm happy to see many of the categories. My only concern has to do with sexually charged matters. And I'm happy to have somebody clarify. I can, I've worked with a number of school systems, and it's my understanding that, for example, if some type of sexual offense occurs outside of the school, they've got folks that have been trained to handle those types of matters, and they are particularly going through that avenue. I'm not sure that's happening in our schools, so that if we have a victim within FCPS, that we have folks that have been trained on handling sexually charged matters, addressing our students appropriately.
Ma'am, for the Police Department, if the SRO gets a case that involves a sexual assault of a child or something, they contact our Special Victims Unit, and they are the experts. They are the ones that are trained in forensic interviewing. They handle those cases. The SROs do not handle those cases.
Okay. Okay. And that's not included in this, at least I could have missed it. But that is not, that procedure isn't listed here. Is it training that occurs elsewhere?
That would actually be training that occurs in the Police Academy.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a department-wide, it's our rules and regulations essentially. If you have a case that requires a detective to respond, the officer taking the report contacts their supervisor, the supervisor contacts the duty officer who calls out the detective to investigate the case. The officers do not investigate the cases.
Okay. Please forgive me for pressing in on this. It is only because of my experience that I have seen this, not in FCPS, but in other jurisdictions, I have seen SROs be very involved in these investigations, and it has been concerning to me. So I would like to know how we can make sure, I understand that, you know, I know if you go through the academy, people can be far and removed from that. What assurances do our, members of our community have that this is going to be handled through certain channels?
Well, ma'am, from my experience, I was a detective in child sex abuse cases, and we did roll call trainings for officers. And they, they're told over and over again, do not investigate these cases. Typically, it's not an issue with Fairfax County Police Department. I never had an issue when I investigated this case eight and a half years. The best we could do is just constantly remind them in roll calls, like, hey, if you do happen to get a case where a child is involved and it's a sexual abuse case, immediately contact your supervisors so that they could get the detectives on the way and stop, don't interview the children. We make that very clear. Do not interview children unless you're a forensically trained interviewer.
Would it be helpful in this initial training of SROs that that would be listed as one of the things that, so that people know? Or is this just for our comfort?
We could also put this information in FAQ if there are a question about the process that occurred, happens when, we could certainly cover that in FAQ.
Okay.
Excuse me, I could also cover, we have SRO school every year, and we can remind them in the SRO school, because they're, all 51 SROs are in that school.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Let me just, all right, and I'll stop with this. I have more, but I know there's lots of people in line behind me. On page 7, it says, at the bottom paragraph, "Law enforcement officer, SRO shall collaborate with school personnel to reduce student engagement with the juvenile justice system and divert students from the courts when possible." As a next step to my board, I, this, again, I think looks like something that needs to be coordinated with our hearings officers and how we're training our staff members. I know we've had, so yes, that will be a follow-on. I also want to support Ms. Hines's statement with respect to having a clear wall between our SROs and our administrators. I do not believe it is appropriate for SROs to sit in while the administrators are doing their investigation or vice versa. And I think that in terms of assuring our community that we are working to have those clear lines, I think that somewhere we need to state that that needs to happen. The two things that I think need to happen that we're not seeing clearly in here is, you know, the notice to the parents, which we have here, but also this wall, this very clear wall. So I will, I will stop and allow my colleagues to speak. Thank you.
So I have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Schultz, who seems to have left, and Ms. Palchuk.
Before I begin my remarks, I do want to share with my colleagues, Ms. Schultz had to leave this evening because she had an unexpected death in the family that she learned about. And she asked me to share with you that it's a close family member, and she only found out about it yesterday, and it just became too difficult to stay. So this is an issue that's very important to her as well. I'm sure she will hopefully be joining us on Thursday and will be speaking to this because prior to joining the board, Ms. Schultz and I and Ms. Evans were part of a Fairfax Education Coalition and the Fairfax Zero Tolerance Reform Effort to really improve discipline practices in our public schools and to bring an extra added focus on restorative justice. So tonight's discussion is one that I've really looked forward to for quite some time. And I want to thank my colleagues who've spoken so far. You've all raised very important key elements of this. So not wanting to necessarily repeat things, but I also do want to reinforce some things. First of all, I do think that on page 3, if you look under FCPS responsibilities in the final paragraph, just above school principal roles and responsibilities, it says, "FCPS will ensure that school administrators with an assigned SRO," that meaning that some of our schools, as you know, don't have SROs. So those where there is an SRO placed in the school, that these administrators will receive relevant training prior to or within 60 days of the SRO's assignment in a school and ongoing joint training with the SROs. The training will be aligned with the SLEP and the DCJS curriculum and in consultation with FCPD. I just felt that was written a little awkwardly at first as I read it. I mean, because what we're really talking about is that's about our school administrators. And it's FCPS is, you know, what we're committing to with our school administrators, not with relation to the SRO training. So again, I would, my next step would be that I would like for our superintendent and staff to provide a little more clarity in a Bray-Bran briefing of what will that actually look like in terms of the training? You know, I don't see need to change this document, but I want to better understand what that is. And I do want to emphasize that if you then go to page 5 at the bottom with the selection and the assignment of the SRO, I just want to compliment Chief Rossler and Dr. Bray-Bran and everyone who worked on this, that there's a lot of really great social, emotional, executive functioning skills being listed here about what we would want for SROs coming into, what we know, this is an educational setting. And while we have many positive things to say about our SROs and their desire to create, as Ms. Hines put it, a very positive aspect of community policing. And I know for my children who came through the high school level, depending on who, you know, a child's experience with an SRO, it can be a very important way for students to develop and understand that the police are meant to partner with their community. And so as we all look for ways to continuously improve that effort and that relationship, you know, I, for the, for the public who's listening and watching, I'm trained as a social worker, I worked in the juvenile court system, and I've spent six and a half years on the school board constantly saying, we are the educational system. We are not the juvenile court system. And we need to do everything in our, in our efforts as a school system to remember that's the role we serve. And I do not want to criminalize our students. I don't want a school-to-prison pipeline. But I also want to make sure that the community knows that I think there are ways that we can create a positive interface between our students and our police in a way that will help them going forward for the rest of their lives. Ms. Hines, thank you. On page 6, where it says, "Initial training of the SROs," I made a note that I would like to see as a follow-on, some more clarity about the ongoing training, whether that's annual, whether it's biannual. I would like the superintendent and chief to determine what's reasonable and appropriate, but initial training shouldn't be where it stops, because we're continuously improving on restorative justice efforts. On page 7, where it really outlines the limited role that our SROs should play, again, I think that's going to be an important part of our training with our school administrators, helping to remind them again, this is an educational setting. And while we partner with our SROs who are in our building, our administrators really need to also understand that limited role that an SRO plays. Because sometimes I think our SROs are only doing what our building administrators are asking them to become involved in. So I think that Chinese firewall that Ms. Hines talked about, our staff, again, who care about safety and security, but they need to understand why it's so important to have a very clear delineation. So Ms. Keys-Gamara, at the bottom of page 7, when you talked about that specific sentence, "SRO shall collaborate with school personnel to reduce student engagement with the juvenile and criminal system," student engagement with the juvenile justice system and divert students from courts when possible", that is absolutely something that I want as a follow-on, and I would be happy to co-partner with you on something like that because I am hearing very positive things, again, from our juvenile court system, Bob Birmingham, who's the director of the juvenile court. We are doing so much good diversion through our police and our court system that we're not doing enough in our school system for diversion. So, I want to really use that as an opportunity. Yeah, that, well, and it's not just that the arrest of a student is a last resort, but as that statement I just read said is that we're diverting students from the courts when at all possible, period, the end. The other thing is that page 11 captures that a little bit more at the bottom, where it says, "Differentiating disciplinary misconduct from criminal offenses. SROs shall not be involved with the enforcement of school rules or discipline infractions that are not in violation of the law. And SROs will consider alternatives to juvenile petition." Again, I want to give some clarity that there are times when our SROs don't want to file petitions. And it's being encouraged of them to file petitions. So, this is where this collaboration again, between our school administrators and our SROs, if there is a shared mindset, then we can reduce juvenile petitions. And I think we, as a school system, have as much responsibility for reducing those petitions. And I don't want to lay that just at the feet of our SROs. On page 15, this one really concerns me a great deal. And Mr. Foster, maybe you can help us, and I know we're limited for time, but I want to just clarify for my colleagues that, I mean, I'm a veteran parent of this school system for 17 years. This one doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, I know directory information and what that means to me as a parent is, what was in that school directory that, you know, I bought from the PTA? This is saying, this directory information has really personal things. And if it's not the school directory, which I don't think it is, again, I'm trying to understand, you know, we better call it something different, because directory information to a parent signals we're talking about the school directory. So I think that as a follow-on, we're going to need some greater clarity in that component, bottom of 14, top of 15. And, you know, I know that our parents rely on communicating with each other through email addresses, but some of this other stuff, I just don't even, obviously, I'm just struggling to say, why is that laundry list there? And, and the language that it says, and this is what I circled, my apologies, that first sentence is, "The information items designated as directory information are determined by the Fairfax County School Board." Well, I've been on the board for six and a half years, and I got to tell you, I don't remember sitting here having a conversation that the student's height, weight, birth date, degrees, awards, and, I mean, I'm seeing nods of affirmation from my colleagues. We've not done that. So, but my affiliation as a member of this county school board is in this document. So, I find that highly problematic.
Mr. Foster?
Right, so, the term directory information is a term of art that comes from FERPA. I take your point, Ms. McLaughlin, that it also could be interpreted to mean, you know, the standard student directory that is passed out, but it's not that. It's a defined term in the federal law. And that's where that term comes from in the MOU. This information that's listed here is information that's typically considered directory information under FERPA, and it's up to each school system to designate each year that information, they consider directory information. And so, as it's noted here, later on in page 15, "The information items designated as quote directory information closed quote are subject to change." And, and so, you know, going forward, this is an annual thing, a notice is sent out to parents telling them, this is the information we consider as directory information, and it will be released to the public upon request. They're given an opportunity to opt out of that process. And that, of course, will happen again this year with the start of the school year.
So, I will opt out.
Okay, so, let me just tag on to that. So, this gets back to what we talked about earlier, this change of Virginia law. So, there's this carve-out for opt-in on address, telephone number, and email, okay? Everything else that's listed here is opt-out. Yeah, right. And that's another gift from our General Assembly with that dichotomy.
Ms. McLaughlin, may I just?
Yeah, I'm happy to have you add into my comment.
How are we explaining to parents that in some instances you need to opt-in, in other instances you need to opt-out? I mean, it sounds like hopscotch. It doesn't sound like, it's very confusing, and we have a duty to make sure that we are not having our parents do something that they don't understand. Oh God.
So, Ms. Kiesgumara, thank you for reinforcing my concern. Mr., it's been a long night, Mr. Foster. So, here's what I'm wondering. First of all, I really appreciate that you all were as surprised as I was that it's naming us as the responsible party for this section, to which I've never seen us deliberate or discuss. But, it says that, as you noted, "The information items designated as directory information are subject to change." Well, that's subject to change by the school board, which were named at the top. So technically, this board could say, well, if you have to opt in for your name of your parents, your address, telephone number, we could just say, we're going to make you opt-in for all of it. Because frankly, I think this list has some, the more sensitive information. Now, I'm just saying, that's a hypothetical. We haven't had legal, we haven't had a legal briefing on what I just said as a hypothetical, but, but technically speaking, we wouldn't have to wait for the General Assembly to tell us which ones opt-in and which ones opt-out. If the General Assembly tied their hands and said, "This is opt-in," then we, as the board, could say, technically correct?
You could. And this is where we get into this split between what would be, you know, legally permissible, and then it runs up against practical operational challenges. Now, Ms. Lufglas is not here, but I think if she were here, she would walk the board through some concern she has trying to do an opt-in process across the entire system for 185,000 students and their parents. And I, you know, I don't want to try and, you know, channel her here because she's not here, but that's something that we, the board would need to hear from her and her team as to how that would be operational.
I appreciate that, Mr. Foster, but just in case I'm missing a component of what you explained, since now they have, 190,000 kids have to opt-in for their parents' names and addresses and phone numbers to be included, then if we're saying, you're going to have to opt-in for any of this information to be included in a FERPA release, I don't think we've created any more work because we're either saying, we have all of this information on you for emergency reasons and otherwise, and now we're just, they're just telling us, who else can have it, correct? So, just, I think we're going to definitely, my, my next step would be that we might need a legal briefing on this. The good news is, everybody, is that because this is subject to change, we could make this subject to change the first week in September. I think. I don't know. Maybe that's, you know, that's, I guess my, my only concern is that this, we wanted this document to be signed by the board supervisors and school board, and as of now, our families only know that the opt-in is for the bottom two bullets. And everything else, they've got to opt-out. So then, colleagues, we might want to talk about this by Thursday. Are we going to do a big old PR campaign out as school board members to our families saying, you may want to be paying attention to the fact that this, this part's an opt-out and this part's opt-in? This is kind of such a surprise, but I wanted to be raising it. The other thing I just want to say on page 16 is I very much appreciate the new language about ICE. I think that we have heard very passionate and reasonable concerns from our community, and I think that that this, the language addition is, is very helpful. And I certainly welcome the community writing to us before Thursday night's vote, if you think that this is captured and been sufficient. Probably the most important thing that I want to touch on, because I know I've taken up time, is on page 17, when Ms. Evans talked about the parent notification in the second paragraph, I cannot emphasize enough, Ms. Evans, you know that this is something that we've talked about for six and a half years in our efforts to improve our practices. And Ms. Kiesgumara and others have been great added voices on to this parent notification piece. I am thrilled that this language is so crystal clear for SROs. And I absolutely believe as a follow-on that as a board, I hope we will be voting Thursday night to say how important it is that this, you know, more uniform language and this more consistent understanding of what parent notification means is something that we, as a division, will equally honor.
I'm happy to work with you on a follow-on on that.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, I believe I more than took up enough time, other than to just say that, I want to express again my appreciation for living in a county and having started my social work career in Fairfax County Juvenile Court. And it continues to be a model at a national level for diverting juveniles and reducing court involvement. And I encourage our public to get to know more and more about the great work that the juvenile court system's been doing. And I think they're a role model for Fairfax County Public Schools to consider improving its own work in how we handle disciplined cases.
Excellent. So now we have Ms. Palchek, followed by Ms. Strauss. And is there anybody else?
Well, thank you. I will try not to repeat some of my colleagues, but I appreciate your comments. So, first of all, I guess, expanding on what Ms. Hines said earlier, sort of on the broader scope, I think it's important not just to protect our students and families who might be questioned, but also we're seeing in the community that some people will not report crimes. You know, we've had an increased focus on sexual harassment, sexual assaults. And I think we want to be clear, and that's where some of these questions will come in, is unless we make some specific changes to this, not only are kids staying home, but we want to make sure that they're coming forward and reporting crimes, they're not afraid to do that. So I think, I think that's very critical to keep in mind as we look at this. We want all of our kids to be safe. I think we're all on board with that. And how we do that is important. Especially as we're seeing, you know, I think we're trying to address as a system, our, yes, we have a decrease of decline in our overall disciplinary cases, but we've seen quite an increase that we're trying to address this year in our, in our Black and Hispanic communities and special needs communities. So I think those are all really important to keep in mind as we're having this conversation. I guess a couple of questions, the opt-in one, thank you, I think, Ms. McLaughlin. You spoke to that very clearly, and I hope we can discuss it more. So to clarify, currently, even though on the MOU, it says that address, telephone number, parent email addresses are still listed as a bullet point, I believe I'm looking at the latest draft, we are saying that only those three currently by the new Virginia code are considered opt-in. Is that correct? Everything else is up, is up to us to decide? Am I understanding that correctly? No?
The last bullet point, address, telephone number, parent email address. Okay?
Is off, yeah.
Folks have to opt-in for that information to be considered directory information and subject to release by, to third parties.
Okay, but the other information is not?
The other information, folks have to-
Is considered directory information.
Correct.
But it says directory information that may be disclosed. So somewhere, we have a list that I think Ms. McLaughlin was referring to, where by proxy, I suppose, staff has decided for the school board what that directory information-
That's correct.
Is. Do we, and I know we want to discuss it, is that available today? Can I look at that? Can that be shared with us today, what that list is currently?
It's on the notice, right?
Yeah. I can send you, I was looking for our regulation, but I can actually send you the opt-out form, the link to the opt-out form. Just to keep in mind, from a school perspective, what we do use that information for would be information in graduation programs, team rosters, theater, any kind of awards that you would receive. So, I do think it would take quite a conversation. We would like to include principals in the conversation when it comes down to talking about what we want to do to change that list. But I'll send you all the opt-out.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. So I guess I'm wondering, is there, is there another way to address what I think we're trying to get at? Is when do we release this information to law enforcement, to ICE, to other? So, is it, would it be up to us to say that any directory, you know, that you must have consent before releasing that? Is that a legal matter that we need to discuss? Before releasing any directory information?
Well, again, that goes back to needing an official warrant or subpoena to do that, so.
Do I have a question on that too?
It's all kind of circular where, so we wouldn't give that information out unless there were some kind of warrant or subpoena. And in that case, it would be a criminal situation.
Okay, so, on that, I know, and I appreciate, I think, members of the public and especially with legal training, which I do not have, have shared with us. And I would like to get some more information. I don't know if you brought it up, Ms. Kiesgumara. So when we're talking about these search warrants, I think that there's quite a bit of consternation about how we're defining, I think we're on page 16, court order subpoenas and search warrants. So, it seems that currently, ICE agents are using warrants that are not official criminal or criminal judicial warrants. And I think we'd like to, I'd like to clarify that here, when we're talking about court orders, subpoenas, and warrants, that they are criminal warrants. So I'm not a lawyer. I guess I would like to ask Mr. Foster, if the best way to, that you would recommend modifying that if we wanted to ensure that they are only done for criminal? Or whether it's criminal or criminal judiciary warrants, subpoenas, and court orders?
So I need to be clear as to, first, on page 16, what this currently provides in the first paragraph, which is that "School officials may only disclose student records in response to court orders, subpoenas, and search warrants." And so as a general matter, if I am called by a principal of a school and he says, "I've got a warrant here, I'm not sure what to do with it," as we talked about, I'm going to tell that principal, send it to me, and me and my legal team will look at it, okay, and advise you. As a general matter, if that is a court-issued warrant, my advice to that principal is going to be that you need to comply with that, because if you ignore or defy a court-issued warrant or order or subpoena, you're subjecting yourself to contempt, which can include jail or fines. Okay? So that's going to be my general advice when there is a court-issued warrant, okay? Regarding administrative warrants, which are not issued by a court, which are civil in nature,
Right.
we will look at those on a case-by-case basis. My advice as a general matter is going to be that they need to present a court-issued warrant if they're going to comply with it. An administrative civil warrant is not at the same level as a court-issued warrant, okay? And, but again, we're in hypotheticals here, and to go back to a point that Mr. Smith made at the outset. In my five-year tenure, I've never gotten a call from a principal saying, "I've got ICE here in my building with an administrative warrant, what should I do?" My predecessor, Ann Murphy, during her tenure, never had a situation where ICE came into a school. I understand there's a concern that going forward, that may change. And we're prepared to deal with that. One approach that we will take, as we've done on other matters, is creating an action team, so that if the approach of the administration changed and ICE were in schools, we would be ready to go to advise our principals as to how they're to deal with that situation.
So, if, let's, because we're in the hypothetical, I hope we only stay in the hypothetical? I can't guarantee that unfortunately. So, if, does ICE currently have the ability to come forward with an administrative warrant? And hopefully a principal would call you, but to say, would they be able to come forward, and if I were a principal- And if I were a principal reading this, I could read that to say, "Oh, here is a warrant." I don't, maybe I don't know the difference between administrative and court. I know I wouldn't necessarily know that I see a warrant. So in the hypothetical, is that a possibility?
Well, I think that we will, we need to do what we've done in the past on other matters, which is we need to provide training to our principals. We need to get out FAQs, it's been talked about. And that's all some, that's all, those are all things that I'll be working with other staff and Mr. Smith on doing.
So is there any legally, what there, and, and I guess, you know, I forget, I know you're SLC, Lori. This, okay, feels very unofficial, Lori. So is, do you see a situation where you would feel uncomfortable to say, rather than just having it as a plain search warrant, that it needs to be a criminal warrant, a court-ordered, court-issued warrant?
A search warrant is signed by a magistrate. That's the only way that it's, it's issued, magistrate or judge. So it's automatically court-ordered. An administrative warrant, we don't assist ICE with any of that stuff, because it's civil in nature, so we have nothing to do with that.
So you-
So if it's just a matter of showing the principals what an administrative warrant would look like, that way they, they don't comply, but they would also have to call their legal, legal office, but-
And again, this goes back to the training.
And FAQ.
So we have training queued up here in the next couple of weeks. And this is an important aspect of the MOU that we would want to be able to use as we develop, or as we implement that training for principals. What do you do in those types of circumstances? And what you do do is you contact Division Counsel's office. It's not one of those situations where we're going to leave it up to the principal to use his or her judgment that-
Do I have a question? Could an immigration court, which is a different, and not a criminal, not the same kind of criminal court, can they issue any of these warrants, court orders, or subpoenas? I'm asking.
Yeah, we would have to look at that. I mean, I will, not to get too much down into the weeds, but immigration courts are administrative courts.
Right.
Right? And so it gets back to the point I meant earlier, which is they're acting in a civil capacity, not a criminal one. But as a general matter, you know, we would be available, if ICE were to show up with whatever kind of the warrant is, to advise that principal on what is compliance obligations or not were.
Okay. I guess, I may want to follow up and just make sure, if it's not in here, if we feel legally that this, this covers what we're discussing, that it's not just in the training, but if we're providing FAQ documents, that we're very clear. I would prefer that it be here, if we feel that it really, you know, I'm happy that it's not necessary, because it's implied, it's, it's covered, okay? We can have the conversation, but I do think it's important to make that distinction, because our principals, as you know, are not trained, generally trained legal counsel.
So they will, so they'll be trained on what to do, and if these situations arise. And, you know, I would also like to say something about our principals and our buildings. I think that it would take a, you know, a major act on the part of the Division Counsel for any of our principals to release any of our students to an ICE agent, other law enforcement agents, without first contacting the Division Counsel's office. From my former role as a Cluster Assistant Superintendent, I don't know of any one of my principals who would readily turn a student over to an outside agency without first double-checking and doing, covering several steps to do that. So that first step, in this case, and in all cases moving forward, would be to contact the Division Counsel's office for guidance.
Okay. I appreciate that. And, and my only question I want to discuss is, would there be, whether it says lawfully issued court orders? I guess, I would prefer that we included criminal in there, so that we're just, I understand, maybe this MOU is not the place. I just think it's important to clarify that, we can figure out where that happens. Final, very quick question. I appreciate, and I do appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I know it's been a truncated process. There's a lot about how SROs are trained, and I appreciate the training that will happen, and the supervisors, I guess I don't know how many, if you're the only supervisor, if we have other supervisors. How are they evaluated? How do we go in and make sure that, you know, an SRO is a very different job from, you know, a community police officer? So how do we, how do you do that evaluation process?
I have three SRO sergeants. They are required to meet with principals and get input on the job that the SRO is doing. They routinely visit the schools that their SROs are in, and that's how they collect, they collect input for their annual evaluation.
So annual evaluation includes both things coming through the department, as well as input from the-
Input from the school administration.
Administration. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss, followed by a go-back for Ms. Hines? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to have Ms. Strauss, followed by Mr. Moon, and then we'll go to the go-backs, if you don't mind.
First of all, thank you very much for the changes made on page sixteen. We certainly, the clarification that Fairfax County FCPD officers are not agents of Immigration and Customs Enforcement, and as such, they shall not participate in any request for assistance that is not of a criminal nature with an FCPS. I'm very grateful, because we are concerned about that. And also, that school officials may only disclose student records in response to lawfully issued court orders, subpoenas, and search warrants. This is, we are not agents of ICE. And even the days of Dr. Spillane, he made it very clear that we were not agents of immigration, and that anything dealing with immigration issues, we're not going to go on in our school buildings and our school campuses, and they have not. But we certainly needed this clarification in the times that we are in, to make sure that in this FOU, MOU, that it's very clearly laid out, what our own SROs are obliged to do. So my question, Mr. Foster, do we, I'm assuming that we do not have to comply with a civil warrant? We are not legally bound? In other words, if we said, "No, we are not complying with a civil warrant," we will not necessarily be arrested?
That is an open, open question. I wish I could be more definitive. There's been a lot of discussion at the local government level in the past year or two on that very issue. I wish there was a Supreme Court decision that answered that question, there's not. And so I don't want to have you all leave here thinking that that is, has a clear answer to it. There's really, it's a situation where the Fourth Amendment and rights of property owners, and you are the property owners in this division in some ways, and determine who comes onto your property and who does not. There's a, there's that, but then there's also federal immigration statutes that bump up against that. And so, you know, certainly, I think going forward, my office will need to continue to advise the school board on reconciling that tension, and, and coming to decision on, on that issue. But as I mentioned earlier, an administrative civil warrant is, does not rise to the same level as a court-issued warrant. It's civil in nature. And so, you know, my advice to principals when they call is, if someone shows up with an administrative civil warrant, we're going to have to have a long talk with whoever is presenting that warrant as to why they need to be doing this on school property during the school day, and why they can't wait until after the school day on off-school property.
Right. So we could basically not honor it, and we ourselves could enter into a serious legal discussion as to why, as owners of the property, we are not allowing this civil warrant to be-
Absolutely.
Okay. I do think as a, as a, as a follow-on or as a follow-up, it is important how we train our principals, our administrators, and absolutely when they would have to call for advice. We are not agents of ICE. That is just very important. Our students and our families need to know that they are safe. We want our children in school, we want our parents to participate in school. We don't want them to be afraid that information is going to be disclosed, that's going to cause disruption to our children and our families. So thank you very much for making these, and those who've been working on this MOU, for making these changes today. I think that's very, very important. I appreciate many of my colleagues' other questions on training for our SROs. This is all really very important. The whole directory information situation, after nine eleven, there was a time when there were no PTA directories issued for a while. And it was a hardship for families, no way of contacting each other. But anyway, we live in unusual times. I suppose in terms of immigration and ICE, again, civil warrants versus criminal warrants, unless Congress changed the laws and the Supreme Court upheld it, I would rather hope that we would dig in our heels and not, not comply with civil warrants that ICE presented to us under any circumstance. So I don't think that's something that is, has to be put into the MOU. I think if we've made, the MOU is between the police department and the schools. And I think that what you've put in on page sixteen, I think very clearly delineates that. So how the school board itself wants to deal with any civil warrants, that is something for us to discuss. But I do think as a follow-on to the training that needs to go on with the SROs, I do encourage us to be very clear in our training with our, with our principals and administrators, so that we are protecting our children and our families. And thank you very much to everyone who has worked on this, this needed revisions. And I think that what we are seeing is much clearer and better than what we had before. So thank you to all who have worked on this.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to be, just to make sure that we are all on the same page, you know, starting with a timeline, that we are scheduled to vote on this, on this Thursday. And then, whatever the outcome may be, they'll be sent over to Board of Supervisors to be voted on by the members in the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, correct? Next Tuesday?
Correct.
So what if we don't vote on Thursday? Then does that push our training beyond summer months? Is that?
Well, we would like to continue the training, because it's a very important training to have, and so that's why we're pushing for having this document approved, so that we can use it for the foundation. I hear that you're saying a "what if," and I would like to provide a little more pushback to say that, because the training is so important, that we would want to start with this document. If not, we go back with the original document and start training off of that. But again-
But the original document is so much different from this MOU.
The original, the original document is very different, but because we've, we're dedicated to a training that we have some kind of training for our principals, we would have to base it off of, and for SROs, we would have to base it off the original document and not the new document going forward.
Okay, so what is a training? Is a training currently scheduled to take place? When is that?
Tuesday, the twenty-eighth?
August seventh and eighth.
August seventh and eighth.
August seventh and eighth. And, and without an agreement between both boards, Board of Supervisors and School Board, that training will not take place? Is that a fair assumption?
We're still going to have the training scheduled for those two dates. As Mr. Smith has mentioned numerous times, the desire is to have, when you talk about how it is fraught with clarification on the role of the SRO, on the items that have mentioned regarding ICE, all the key issues that have been brought up, known by the community, by the elected officials, by the, the input sessions, we'd like to be able to go ahead and make sure that we address that specifically in there for clarification. But it's also training between our principals and our SROs. And we also have a number of issues that we go through each and every year that regard security and safety training, that part of our community feedback has been that we need to be communicating court name more often. So we'll be having that training. This is a critical component of that training, is, is-
That's exactly the point, whether, whether we need to have this MOU done, passed by the both boards, for the training to take place and proper training to be given to administrators and SROs. That's trying to understand the time and necessity of this board needing to take an action on this Thursday, and also the same for the County Board of Supervisors on next Tuesday. So with that said, with that said, I also want to say, you know, want to thank SLC, SLC, on behalf of, you are, on behalf of Fairfax County, you know, Police Department. You know, we not, none of us, nor board members, you know, whatever we may have said at this table, does not mean that we do not value, we do not value the service we've been provided by Fairfax County Police Department, well, you know, how County Board of Supervisors has supported us over the years, the funding SRO program. I, along, along with Mrs. Strauss, I remember when Congressman Jerry Connolly, when he was chairman of the Board of Supervisors, when he first pushed for this program, you know, he started a much smaller program. At the time, he had a serious gang problems in middle schools, started with the middle schools. And I think we shared, two schools shared the one SRO that began extending to high school. And then also, we saw that one, half of a SRO was not enough for the middle schools, and then each middle school got the full SRO. So that's how this program has evolved. Obviously, you know, we see that a lot of areas we need to improve on. That is why we, our superintendent and chief, you know, chief of police, under the leadership of Chairman Sharon Bloba, have been working on for many weeks, with the committee members to come up with an improved MOU. I see that this is not a perfect document. This is a living, living document, where we, we, we need to, both boards with the community need to continue work on to improve. That is why I, when I saw an email from Ms. Hines with a proposed, you know, follow-up motion, I was happy to see that, I'd be happy to support that. I also assume there's some other board members who might add to the follow-up motion, you know, fine, you know, fine-tuning what Mrs. Hines is seeking from her follow-up motion, and add, you know, a few other, few other important points for, you know, staff members to work on in the going forward. But I agree, I agree about the, I mean, I fully understand the necessity of having to have an agreement done by next Tuesday, by this Thursday, by this board, next Tuesday. Having said all that, I still have a couple of questions at least. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring these questions to either Mr. Foster or Mr. Maurice Smith. Sorry that I haven't given you advance, advance notice of these questions coming up. I just found my notes from last night. So I have a four one, but I'm going to limit the questions to just two. They are very technical, so bear with me. So page number fourteen. It's the third paragraph. I'm going to read the very first sentence of a third full paragraph. Any record that is created and maintained by the SLC or an SRO exclusively for the purpose of a possible school disciplinary action against a student would fall outside the definition of a law enforcement record. I thought that one of the major accomplishments you are seeking out of this improved MOU is clear delineation between the role of SRO vis-à-vis a disciplinary process, and SRO will have nothing to do with our disciplinary process. If that's the case, how could, how could SRO possibly have any record exclusively for disciplinary purposes? So as I was reading this, tell me if I am misinterpreting what I have read, but that was, when I read that paragraph, that question came to me. So if that has to be clarified going forward- So if that has to be clarified going forward, I mean, I would welcome the staff to work with the Chief Rossler to clarify that and answer the question to me. The second question has to do with page eighteen. Mr. Foster? Mr. Foster, if you are listening? I know you can do multitasking much better than I do. Page eighteen. The paragraph right above physical intervention. Physical intervention. And it says again, "SROs are expected to be familiar with the school rules and their application within the school system." Okay? And the next sentence, "Routine rule that can be handled administratively through the disciplinary process will not be handled as violations of law, but rather be referred to the principal for administrative action." Does that, does that sentence imply that SROs may refer certain actions or inactions by students to administrators for disciplinary purposes? If SRO has nothing to the disciplinary process at all, why would SROs be referring anything to administrators for disciplinary process?
So I, yeah?
Okay, if you could answer me that question?
Yeah, I, I think what that is contemplating, Mr. Moon, is the following scenario. I mean, the SROs walking down the hall, he sees something that is not a criminal violation, but maybe a rule violation. He's going to report that to the principal. I think we would want him, you know, if he deserves something, to, to, you know, let them know about. Like anybody else, so let's say we had a parent in one of our halls walking along and thinks that they see an SR and our violation. We would want that parent to report that. And I think they're treating the SRO the same way under that paragraph.
Is that? Is that, is that really, are we being really true to what you're trying to accomplish out of this? When we say there's a clear delineation between roles of SRO, administrators and SRO being completely out of disciplinary process at all? Why would SRO be referring anything for disciplinary reasons? I'm not, I'm just asking questions. Whether it, whether there is, you know, page, you know, conflict right there with what you're trying to accomplish versus what he says?
Yeah, I, I don't think we want the SROs to just turn a blind eye. If they see something like bullying, for example, I mean, that's just one example. I mean, they're, you know, or any other disciplinary, yeah, or, you know, see a fight that doesn't rise to the level of, you know, a criminal violation, but nonetheless shouldn't be ignored.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks for your response.
If I might, if we look at the top of page seven, I think that that might provide a little more clarity. That SROs are school officials and will be considered an active member of their assigned school community and that they will assist with matters related to safety, security, and the exchange of information. So again, if there were an issue that were related to safety that didn't rise to the occasion for the SRO to become involved as a member of the school community, we would want that information to be shared with the administration.
And the next sentence though, it says, next paragraph, it says, "SROs shall not become involved in routine school matters such as administrative actions or actions not directly related to the safety, safety of the students and staff." Okay, I understand your, I understand your response. That's all that I have at this point, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I will just ask one question before I go to the go-backs, and that, actually two questions. The first question is, it's my understanding that as soon as this MOU is agreed to, that you all will proceed with the training, a collaborative effort between FCPD and FCPS. But that doesn't stop the work on the continuous review and the focus on continuous improvement of this agreement. Is it your intention to revisit this agreement between now and the end of the school year so that with input from the community, so that it can continuously be improved?
So Dr. Barry Runn shared the other evening at the community meeting that he is open to that and working very closely with FCPD to take another look at the document, to take feedback from individuals regarding the document, so that we can always work in a continuous improvement mode to make this a better document.
So a follow-on could be to begin that process in the fall with the, with the intention that we use the lessons learned of what's in this document and try to continuously improve it?
We could do that. And we could also talk about those items that perhaps we feel aren't appropriate for this document, but might be appropriate for another type of public document. So that if we wanted to develop something along those lines, we could certainly do that as well. Because I know that there's a lot of interest for things that, again, may not be appropriate for a document that talks about our working relationship, but might be appropriate for a document where a board, where both boards could get behind public information that we feel is important to be shared.
Or as part of a parent handbook?
Or as part of a parent handbook, or as part of expanded FAQs. I, I think that there are a variety of things that we could do outside of this particular document to provide information to our community.
And clarity on maybe some of the interpretations in this document?
Certainly.
But that, that's important to know. Additionally, I appreciated your comments on the training for SROs. It says, you, you mentioned earlier that you have fifty-one SROs that are trained every year. Does that mean that before the school starts every year, you do a refresher course with all of your SROs?
Yes, ma'am. It's scheduled for August twentieth, the week of August twentieth this year.
So that's in addition to the August seventh and eighth?
Yes, ma'am.
Where it's a collaborative and then you do additional focused?
Yes.
That's very helpful, thank you very much. So I'm going to go to go-backs. Ms. Hines initially, followed by, let me get, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, and then Ms. Palchuk.
Okay, thank you. So thank you all, this has been very helpful. I think I am going to propose one small amendment, and that's on page six, changing will to shall. I, I hope that's okay. I'll go ahead and float that with the board and, you know, it's just one word, but I think it's loaded.
Which page is that?
It's page six, under initial training. The first sentence says they will, I think it should say they shall. And then I will probably have, I definitely will have some follow-on motions and they'll be in the form of the board directing the superintendent to come back to the board with information on different things. And I probably will split them out by topic so that people have a chance to, you know, up or down which ones they can support. I appreciated this opportunity to sort of dig into the roles and responsibilities of school-based staff when it comes to ICE and, you know, what do we actually do at the door? I think there's just a lot of question about that. And thank you, Mr. Foster, for your clarifying what you could about that. It still is a little murky, I guess. And I would just say that as one school board member, to the extent that I can know if that happens in my part of the district, I want to know as soon as I possibly can because I think that's something the community would like to know. There are federal agents coming to our schools. We, the community will want to know that. So, and finally, I would say, I still feel like I have an outstanding question. I think that this document, you know, and then the, the additional amendment today does a lot of good work to clarify what SROs can, can, can share and reveal and what our, what our administrators can share and reveal. But I'm not sure that I have comfort about the question of to the extent to which SROs can kind of be a leak. You know what I mean? And I, I just don't know. I don't feel like I have a clear answer to that. I do know that FCPD coordinates with ICE in the regional gang task force. They do. And I, there have been, you know, situations where there were arrests made in my community and an ICE agent was with the arresting officers, visibly with them. And that is very upsetting to the people in the community. And when I brought that up with someone in, in the police force, the response I got was somewhat defensive. You know, sort of like, we're doing important work in the community. So I understand that that coordination is very important to the people in the gang task force and the people who are doing that work. But I need to know how information sharing is done. So I think one of my follow-ons is going to be asking whoever can do it to come back to the board with very detailed information about, you know, what are all the possibilities for student information being shared with, with ICE, honestly? You know, what, what, how, how does, when, when ICE works with FCPD on criminal issues, gang issues, what is the possibility that FCPS student information is being shared without the permission of that student? So I, I don't know exactly what that response is going to look like, but I'm going to ask for it so that we have some clarity. I don't know what to do with this document to make the community feel safe right now because I feel like we don't have enough information.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, followed by Ms. Palchuk?
Okay, I, I too need some clarification. And this is a question I didn't ask before, just because I wanted to cut the time down. But on page twelve, the third paragraph states, "Each SRO shall meet regularly with the assigned school principals for the purpose of exchanging information about current crime trends, problem areas, cultural conflicts, or other areas of concern, et cetera, et cetera." What exactly is a cultural conflict? And why do we need to say cultural in front of the word conflict? Why do we need to say that? Can somebody tell me that? It's on page twelve. It, has that been removed in the new document? If not, I'm happy to make an amendment to remove it because I think that it seems to have some unsavory overtone, undertones that I'm not comfortable with as a school board member. Page twelve, third paragraph refers to cultural conflicts. I thought the word cultural had been removed, but I'm reading it in the one that I printed out. It's still there? Okay, I, I think it shouldn't be there. And so that would be my amendment. Because I, if somebody can't tell me what a cultural conflict is, then it's a loaded word. Okay. Okay. Also, I, I'm happy to work with Ms. McLaughlin or whomever with respect to the opt-in, opt-out controversy. Were you guys working on that? Okay. So I, yes, we need to do something with the, it, it should not be confusing. I think, you know, unless we have time to do a whole public education on when you're opting in and when you're opting out, I, in, it shouldn't be necessary. And so I just, I don't appreciate the confusion that it creates. I know that nobody here created it. Please don't take my tone for anything other than it's getting close to my bedtime. So I, that is my, my second concern and possible, my possible second amendment.
So Ms. Palchuk, followed by Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you, and I support that, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. My question, I'm going back to age sixteen. Looking at, I believe, the third paragraph under court orders, which I still would like to make sure we clarify. Third paragraph, page sixteen. So where it says, "School officials will retain original school records and will provide copies in response to any court order, subpoena, or search warrant." And then it says, "Notice shall be provided." So I guess, A, I would, one idea is to remove any. Again, I would like criminal court orders to, or B, if we, if, by school official is a little unclear, it could be any school official, correct? So if we are saying that our practice is that Division Counsel, like how can I guarantee that every, you know, we will contact counsel before making these decisions? So can we say notice shall be provided to Division Counsel's office? When, before providing copies in response to any court order, subpoena, or search warrant? Would we, I guess, would we feel comfortable saying that that is the policy we're following? That, that any school official can't just say, here you go? I understand we want to train people. But I also don't want any school official having the power to hand over.
So, so Ms. Palchuk, am I reading that, as I read it, and maybe I'm reading incorrectly, that the second sentence is merely referring to the first sentence? So the first sentence is a general that school officials will retain these records and provide those copies in response. And then the second is that notice shall be provided to the Division Counsel, who will coordinate with law enforcement. So in, in the actual providing of those records, it's the Division Counsel who would coordinate that with law enforcement and the Commonwealth Attorney Office. That, that's how I read it, but...
It's a little unclear. So is the, as appropriate, is that referring to the attorney's office as appropriate? Is that referring to any time that any court order, subpoena, or search warrant, does it only come to Division Counsel as appropriate? I guess it's, I'm confused because I'm reading it differently. So I would like to clarify that and what we're trying to say there. I don't know. So, well, I'd like to amend it, but before amending it, understand,
Mr. Foster, do you want to respond?
What we need there.
Yeah, we were side, we were sidebarring here. And so, you know, the, I think the reason that phrasing as appropriate is there is, you know, for example, we sometimes get court orders or subpoenas in, not anything to do with criminal stuff, but like custody fights, where mom, you know, or dad has, you know, filed a divorce action and there's a subpoena issued as part of that. And really, in that situation, obviously, we would not need to coordinate with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. They would coordinate with me.
Yes, but that's not clear here, right? So, right, so my understanding, is the, is the reading there that it, the as appropriate should only apply to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office?
Right.
It's my question.
I think the as appropriate is referring to, it depends on the context in which that court order or court subpoena has been issued. So if it's a civil court subpoena, Ms. Palchuk, that obviously not criminal. But as I've mentioned earlier, if, if school officials and principals are ignoring that, that's a problem. That's a problem because it subjects them to contempt for not complying with it. And so, you know, I don't know if I'm answering your question.
I understand, but I guess, would there be an instance where you would not want them to come to you before making that decision?
So I will tell you that on custody, because we get that question so often, right? We have prepared an FAQ sheet that is provided to every single principal in our school system. And it tells them what to do so they don't have to pick up the phone and call my office. You know, in a system of our size, it's probably not a surprise to you, during the school year, they're getting subpoenas every week.
Is that the only case where, is custody case the only one?
That's the most common, that's the most common, yes.
Okay, well, A, I would like to clarify the as appropriate. I think it's a little confusing. All right, let me think about it a little bit. Thank you.
Ms. Patrick, are you considering having a follow-on that would be a clear, a clarification in an FAQ that says any warrant that comes from, that has anything to do with immigration would have to come to the General Counsel?
I think, I don't know if, let me think about it. Here could be other cases. Yes, immigration is a concern, but because school official is pretty broad, I need some time, thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, Mr. Foster, on page eighteen, I forgot to bring this up. I, I'm worried about FERPA protections and how this is worded at the top of the page where it begins, "Whenever practicable," about arrests. In the second sentence, it says, "Arrests that must occur during school hours..." In the second sentence, it says, "Arrests that must occur during school hours or on school grounds shall be coordinated through the school administrator to minimize potential disruption." And even the first sentence talks about, you don't want to disrupt the educational process or school setting. There's no reference in here at all that part of FERPA and part of our juvenile court system in this country is to protect juveniles from being revealed for crimine, criminal involvement because we're trying to, you know, give them the opportunity to remain anonymous when it's a juvenile infraction and, and therefore not have their reputations stained as they become adults. So, you know, if you allow for an arrest in a school building, there, there's going to be students who are going to see it. And so even if the language just needs to say that it's not simply about not to disrupt the educational process, but we have to protect the identity of a minor, right? So I, 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 I think that's just really important language that, again, from a legal standpoint, I would think we have an obligation, a legal obligation and responsibility that we're supposed to protect the identity of a minor in terms of criminal charges. So I, again, I know we're supposed to vote on this on Thursday, but I will also say the notes I made was, a lot of this document, we as the school board are going to be held accountable. This is, I mean, you could say the board supervisors are accountable for what the SROs do, but we are accountable for what we allow happens in our school building, and the public holds us accountable. And I want to make sure that we're not, as the school board, entering into an MOU that is not child-centered. And so that whole paragraph, to me, completely missed the point, that this wasn't about just disruption, this is about still protecting a minor. So, Mr. Foster, I don't want to put you on the spot, and I will just say for anybody watching, I mean, it's 10 o'clock at night. It worries me that, you know, staff probably began their day early in the morning, and in the future, I hope you're all coming in late when you know you're going to have to work late with us. But, so I, I just, you know, now, if that's not happening, it needs to happen, and I mean that with seriousness. I mean, we, we have to do our work sometimes at night, but it means you guys, we need you fresh to be able to work with us, and coming in at 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning doesn't allow you to do your best work and us to do our best work together. So that's a side note. So, Mr. Foster, just if, since it is a very late hour, if you wouldn't mind, maybe we can touch base on that tomorrow. But to my colleagues, that might be where, depending on what Mr. Foster says, if it's a legal thing that we've got to fix that language, then it might not be that we need an amendment on my part because it needs to be legally fixed. But if it turns out that he thinks there's legal room, I, I will want to try and fix that in some way so that we are protecting the privacy of minors. That was my, my go-back.
And Ms. McLaughlin, I'm certainly not a lawyer, I do not play one on TV, but when I look at this too, I, I think that we may also would want to consider those adult students that we have in our buildings as well. So that's a consideration as we think about this particular provision where you focus on the minors, but we do have adult students in the buildings.
We do, Mr. Smith, but what I'm saying is by law, you, you know, even if you notice in the Washington Post and the media, they are not to print the names of minors. Adults, it gets printed. So I, I, it's not that I'm insensitive to our adults in the building, I'm just saying there's a legal component there that, at minimum...
For those students who are minors.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, out of a humanitarian approach, we should try to be sensitive to anyone who's going to be arrested in our building, and that includes our employees. I mean, we should try to minimize, I mean, because it does say "staff" in that first thing. We should try to protect the dignity and privacy of our employees if an arrest is going to happen in a school setting too.
Do I have any other go-backs?
Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your patience. I was about to, thank you for your patience, but we do have some next steps. And I do want to reiterate with all of the people in the audience that the rights of our immigrant population and protecting those rights and creating a safe and secure place in our schools for, that is welcoming for all students, is the number-one priority of the school board. And it is not, there is no intention of the school board to be disrespectful or disregard those rights, and they are certainly something that is supported by all of us around the table. So even if there are things in this MOU that some people say, "Oh, well, we need to tighten this up, or we need to do even more," if that is something that we do going forward with successive iterations of this, that does not mean that we don't respect and care about the rights of all students and the immigrant students and refugees in particular. And so I would urge people to look at it from that standpoint and realize that what this document does try to do is clearly define roles and responsibilities in an administrative agreement, and that we should be looking at other additional pieces that will clarify some of the rights and responsibilities, either through FAQs with a revision to our SRNR and also additional materials that we provide to, in the form of handbooks and other communiqués. So let's go to the next steps. Ms. Evans, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, and Ms. McLaughlin and I may be offering a follow-on motion as well for the, on this issue.
Excellent.
Not sure coordinate training processes is the, I'm not sure it's the right word, but I think we get the gist of it. We just want to make sure that if we have this in our, in our, you know, MOU, we want to make sure that we're following the same policies within our disciplinary process. I think we get the, we get the point. So that's fine.
Would you rather it say reinforced training processes? Or ensure parallel training processes?
Ms. Keys-Gamara, are you, I had a question. Are you suggesting an amendment to this, or are you...
No, this has to do with making sure, I think, which is something similar that you had with a different subject matter, that with respect to what we have in our MOU with respect to, and I had a page for that.
I think it's 16.
Okay.
If it's investigation and questioning, it's...
Right.
It's 16.
So we want to make sure that our hearings office...
So this is in, in our purview?
In our, right, right.
That we're going to, it's informational.
This is informational to FCPS to make sure that what we're doing is consistent with what's in the MOU.
Is it page seven?
Was it at the bottom of page seven where we're talking about, "SRO should collaborate with school personnel to reduce student engagement with the juvenile justice systems and divert students from courts when possible?"
Is it also an investigation and questioning? Because that's, investigation and questioning is on page 16. Or is it not?
The first question had to do with seven. I also said something about investigations. So it perhaps got, yeah, perhaps got combined.
So that would be page seven and, pages seven and 16?
No, it's not on 16. Investigation and questioning, is that what you, no?
Yeah, that's on, oh, 17.
17.
And so there was the looking at parent notification and wanting parent notification, our policies to match what we have here.
Correct. That's, thank you, because I lost it, I'm sorry. It is the parent notification was the second thing that I mentioned, and then the first thing was the sentence that, Mr. Smith, with respect to page seven.
On page seven with diverting students from the courts when possible.
Can I suggest that we actually chunk this a bit? So the first one is a follow-on motion, the second one is a follow-on motion, and so we, we clarified that these are all follow-on motions that are coming on Thursday night?
Well, actually, the first one, I want the information. We're going to get the, I want to get the information, and then we're going to have a follow-on motion, which we don't need to have that as a next step because we're just going to do it.
Right, and mine is probably breaking it out. One is the parent notification was a follow-on, I believe, but the information coordination from page seven was, was for us internally. Does that make sense? No, I didn't, okay. So they, you guys have the notification, right? Yeah.
So can we go back up? Because I understand on item one, you're talking about modifying that to say a crosswalk?
Yeah, we want... Mm-hmm. Marian's at a town, Stefan's doing leaders we need to know, I'm just, it's a time thing for us, so that will be a challenge. Well, I wonder if...
So, right, so here's my challenge.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the only one in my office this week. All my other attorneys are on vacation, I'm holding down the floor.
I totally understand, but it is very disappointing that the board's going on, on its break at, on Thursday, and we have more central administration on vacation this week than I can even wrap my brain around. I don't understand why we find ourselves in this.
For this purpose, I, I'm not sure that, considering what we're going to be asking, we may not need that in advance of Thursday. We, I mean, we can, you know, well, we can do that, but also because we're going to be asking staff to take a look at the differences and bring us back a recommendation. We're not going to be...
So is that the next step? Then we should just wipe it off?
Well, no, I mean, because I, I want to see it, though. I mean, I do want to see it. So I just think it, if, if it takes longer than until, yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's, well, for one thing, we don't know that the, no, I don't want to, I don't want to...
Because it just take off in advance of Thursday, so staff can take that in charge.
Right, right, we're right, yes. Exactly, yes, okay, so, right, okay.
So we just want to... Whatever is appropriate and when they're back...
Ms. Evans.
So all those in favor of that? Okay, Mr. Moon?
I just, just in defense of the staff, you know, the school would maybe be taking a recess during the month of August, but our central staff members are all back to work during the month of August because that's when they do leadership conference, they have a training, everything happens. So, so I don't want to, I don't want to flirt, the administrators taking a break sometime during the month of July, because I'm taking my break.
I didn't complain about the administrators taking a break? He's directing it.
I'm, I'm responding to her because there was, there was a...
I'm just, I'm concerned.
Okay, well, and, and I think that, that we can certainly do whatever we need to do for Thursday night because basically we're going to be asking for staff to continue the process. So we can ask for staff to, to continue the process and bring us back a recommendation on parent notification without having all the answers. I would eventually like all the answers on this, but we don't have to have it for Thursday. So, thank you for raising that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All those in favor of the first bullet? That is unanimous. Second bullet, you are looking for, Ms. Keys-Gamara?
It's fine with me. I wasn't the one who was really on the parental notification. That was Megan and Sandy, but that's, but that's, as long as it's, we want, we want that information, correct? If you want to put all our names on there, that's fine. They combined it, it's fine. But, yeah, my, my amendments are not up there, but I'll deal with that whenever you get to it.
Okay. So, the purpose there is really to take some language out of the MOU and use that to inform the language, to better inform the language in the...
SRNR.
SRNR and in the training of the hearings office.
Correct.
Staff, do you understand that that's what it means?
No.
No, okay.
We need to restate that so it's clear.
So can I say, can I interpret? Use the language in the MOU on page seven and 17 to, with respect to parent notification and restorative justice to...
Court diversion.
And court diversion to inform our SR, to make modifications to the SRNR and to inform training for the hearings office.
And, and we could do that, but I know that we look at the SRNR annually, so I don't know how we would make those changes to the SRNR.
And you just voted on it about a month ago.
Correct, but that, that doesn't mean that we can't start working on the new SRNR.
Oh, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. I was just trying to provide some expectation for when the work would be completed, and we could, could then implement.
Yes, Ms. McLaughlin, before we continue on.
Yeah, I'm just going to push back gently to staff on this one. This, it's one thing of what the SRNR says, it's another thing in how we execute on the SRNR. And there's nothing that stops this school division from doing continuous improvement on how we are handling our parent notification where we're pretty clear on, but we're not necessarily executing on. And the court diversion model for what we'd like the hearings office to consider, that's not changing the SRNR. It's what the hearings office then decides is going to be the disposition to the students. And so if we're looking at that diversion means not involving kids in, in a court involvement, diversion in our case might be that we're not going to necessarily, you know, meet out pretty severe discipline consequences. We might look at, again, how do we do restorative justice more and, and less harmful dispositions?
And we don't disagree with that. I think that it's the focus on the, making the modifications where I brought up our cycle for the SRNR, but we can certainly consider all that you just shared and figure out how to improve the processes around the SRNR.
So you can say to make future modifications to the SRNR when we know that happens, but it can inform their training now for the, for the upcoming year.
So, Ms. Hines, please.
I just, it's late, it's 10:15. I'm not sure I'm really following necessarily what it is we're asking. I feel like, I just have to say, I think if we're going to make changes in how we do things in the buildings, we have to have a more complete conversation with the people in the buildings who have to do these things. So I don't, I mean, I can support this as a general direction for a future conversation, but I, at this point, at 10:15, I can't say change the training for anybody tonight, but that's... Not that, no, my, my follow-on is about SRO training.
I thought Ms. Keys-Gamara, that's hers, and I thought that's what she wanted it to be.
So Ms. Keys-Gamara has stepped out of the room, so can I suggest we go on to the next one and come back to it? But before we do that, I see Mr. Moon has a comment he would like to make.
I'm going to have to agree with Ms. Hines that, you know, tonight, tonight's work session is... session is supposed to be on MOU between FCPD and FCPS as opposed to SRNR. So, if we could just, you know, focus on MOU rather than making decisions in SRNR tonight.
Fair enough. So, the third bullet, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, just that was supposed to be the superintendent will provide clarity on the school administrator training because it references school administrator training. And I just, I think it'd be helpful to understand what that actually looks like so we can appreciate what we're doing as a division. But it's referenced in the MOU, and I think we should just know what it actually means.
And can we combine that with your next one on page six? So, it says on page three and on page six?
Yeah. Because was the ongoing training for SRNR, SROs, sorry. Oh, yeah. I think you're right, Ms. Hines. Page six, it just talks about initial training. There's no reference to if there's any ongoing or follow-up training. So, you're correct. I think we can just leave it to my, the school administrator part. And then, we could talk about a follow-on motion that we want something to reference ongoing, annual, bi-annual training or something.
Right. Yeah, my follow-on was going to be basically for the superintendent to get back to us on, you know, what the training is for SROs and how often and just the plan for that with specificity.
Okay. Sounds good. Then, do you want me to delete mine up there?
It's up to you. I mean, I don't know that we need belt and suspend, you know.
Right. I mean, you can delete it if you're going to have, if you're going to capture the clarity.
We'll have a follow-on on that.
Yeah, that's fine. You can just delete mine.
And we can provide that as a full update, then.
Excellent. And on the next one, this is regarding the...
Yeah, that needs to be worded a little bit differently. So, it's supposed to be FCPD access to directory information. And you can keep FCPS there for clarity, but we're talking about directory, FCPS directory information. And, you know, I think that that's, that might be something that, again, will end up as a follow-on motion that I think Ms. Keys-Gamarra and I are talking about because, again, it was something where it referenced the school board makes the decision on what's in the directory information and how we're going to opt-in or opt-out with it. And I think we need to have more clarity there.
All those in favor? And the last bullet, Ms. McLaughlin?
Actually, there should be two bullets because I was asking Mr. Foster that we're going to need legal interpretation about page 18 where we're talking about arrests that will happen during school or on school grounds. So, maybe that's what that was supposed to be, the legal briefing. I think there is supposed to be that we might need some legal briefing on the directory information piece, too. This one's a tough one. I mean, because if we're going to have a follow-on motion about the directory information, it will probably require some legal review to say, you know, here's... So, I, I think it's just good to have it up there so staff knows that we might need to be consulting with them on our follow-on motion that's relating to the directory information and the rests on school grounds. It's kind of more of like a heads-up. So, and then, the one above it, it just might be that in a Braeburn briefing on greater clarity on the directory information in a Braeburn briefing, we'll want to hear why we're doing the directory information the way we've been doing it. And so, it's going to take a little bit of a wrestling on timing for that. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of this? And I guess my question before we do that is actually, isn't there going to be a follow-on motion regarding directory information in a deeper dive by the school board on what's asked in the directory information or what's listed?
Right. So, the last item says schedule legal briefing. I don't know that we have time to schedule legal briefing before Thursday. I just meant that we may need legal guidance. Legal guidance. Legal guidance related to arrests on school grounds and directory information. Yep.
So, the bullet...
I got to talk to John.
So, it will be very important for us to know which is for a follow-on and what you might need for your decision on Thursday as we go through the rest of the next steps.
Right. So, I would just say for that one in particular, I'm sensitive to what Mr. Foster said, which is with staff out. I mean, there's only so many hours in a day that somebody can do. So, it might be that he can help guide Ms. Keys-Gamarra and I on how we can write it in such a way that if we, we can't, we may not be able to get the legal answer, but it's something that we can look at fixing because, as we talked about the MOU, if there needs to be maybe some updates in the fall thing, and especially if it's a legal issue like FERPA, they're going to want to fix it as soon as possible. But I get that we want to start moving on this thing. So, I'll confer with Mr. Foster. And I'm very sensitive to staff. So, as Mr. Moon pointed out, no, I'm not chastising people for being on vacation. I'm just expressing my worry that we had something placed on our plate that we didn't expect that is so time-sensitive and we're finding ourselves without a lot of...
That's the, is that the end of the next steps? Or do we have another page? Because I have some comments that I didn't, that I took down from various school board members that I don't see up here.
Madam Chair, did you want the proposed amendments up here as well?
That's what I was going to suggest. I actually have two proposed amendments to the document, to the MOU itself. One is Ms. Hines' proposed amendment to change will to shall in the training section.
That must be a pretext.
So, just an expectation there will be an amendment for that. And then, there will be an amendment by Ms. Keys-Gamarra regarding on page 12 to remove cultural conflict. The phrase, "cultural conflicts."
Correct. Remove the word "cultural." We're dealing with conflict.
Just conflict. So, you'll remove just "cultural." Okay?
Correct.
And then, Ms. Evans, I see your hand is up.
Yes, I just wanted to get clarity on one point. We've talked a lot about ICE and ICE enforcement and, you know, talked about how we appreciate the change. I guess I don't have clarity on whether anyone is bringing a follow-on motion regarding ICE enforcement or not. Is anyone planning to? No.
I did have additional amendments that you didn't mention. I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to.
Regarding ICE specifically?
Well, not mentioning ICE specifically, but with respect to information that can be shared, opting in and opting out and whether, all of that. That was one of them.
I thought that was part of the discussion. And that's why I asked whether you were waiting it for the Braeburn brief or if you are going to put forth a follow-on motion that says the school board will look at the list of directory information and determine if that's the appropriate one or if we need to make modifications. Because as it's written in the MOU, it allows the school board to change that list. And so, that would be something that could be done by this school board in the fall even.
If it's in the MOU, I think it presents a problem and it presents confusion. So, I was thinking, correct me if I'm wrong, that that needed to be addressed before Thursday if we're voting on this document with respect to the opt-in, opt-out information issue.
Mr. Foster, would you like to address that, please?
Well, I understand that the legislature has said there's certain information you have to opt-in for. But what we need clarification on is where we have flexibility legally, we, you know, I understand that there's concern about what burden that may create, but I'm, have a greater concern about the degree of confusion that it creates for our, so...
But also, just to, just really, what's not captured here is, right now, the way the MOU is written, it's against the Virginia law. Because the MOU doesn't say that those two final bullets are by an opt-in purpose only. It just says...
It's the Virginia law. But, yeah.
Right. What's that?
I believe only the final bullet is included in that Virginia law.
Right. But we need to make that clear that that's...
And I think we can take that back and work on that in the next day or two to provide some clarification on the opt-out.
Or the opt-in.
Or the opt-in or the directory information.
And the other piece of it is, I would, from a follow-on motion perspective, it clearly states that the directory information, the information items designated as directory information are subject to change. And so, it does give this school board, because the first paragraph says the school board designates what's in the directory information. So, if we were to change the directory information, and that's why I'm saying that follow-on motion could say that this school board will review that information and make a determination.
Especially since we're named in the document. That's fine, Madam Chair. The final one that I had had to do with, was actually mentioned by Ms. Hines, was with respect to a clear delineation between the SRO participating, whether they're sitting in or, it was two specific places, and I don't have the pages right now. But one was the SRO sitting in on the administrative investigation as part of that. And the other one was sitting in on the hearing in the discipline office with, when they're not providing testimony. Either one of those, that was mentioned at a different part of this document. But I think if we make sure we have language with respect to a clear line between the SRO and how they participate in these investigations, that will clear that up.
So, Ms. Hines has her hand up regarding that.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I don't have language right now, but I'm going to go back and write a follow-on motion about that. So, I'd love to send it to you and get your thoughts. And, yeah, because I don't, I don't know exactly what it should say, but I think we need, I want to direct the superintendent to come back to the school board with some recommendations for how we can make that clearer in the MOU going forward. Does that make sense?
Right. Absolutely. And I just wanted to mention, I had those two things marked in my mind, and it was two places. One was in the school and one was actually in the hearing itself, the SRO.
At the hearings office?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me send it to you and you can...
Yes.
Can I urge you, when you look at that language, to also consult with SEPTA or the Students with Disability Community? Because in speaking to them, there has been some concern that the, those close relationships inside the building may provide some assistance in that situation.
We'll add some language about that. Thanks.
Ms. Palchak. And then, I would like to have a general idea of how much longer people want to stay tonight?
All night. I'm just kidding.
Wear the pillows.
So, and I emailed Mr. Foster. I don't know if you had a chance to see it. So, I was thinking back at the question I had on page 16 before, I think that's a paragraph, and trying to clarify when records requests should go through Division Counsel. So, I guess I'm leaning toward language at this point will make little sense. But along the lines of when that record, the records request is related to an immigration matter. So, if we could add, I want to work, Mr. Foster, if it's related to an immigration matter, that it will or shall go through the Division Counsel's office. Because the concern is, I understand there are many times when we have guidance around custody and perhaps other areas. And, and I understand that. I think even that, though, gives me pause to think that there are times when, I mean, there's, there are times when an administrator will not go to you and there are times when they will go to you. So, if you feel comfortable, I would like to propose amendment along those lines in that same paragraph that if a school records request is related to an immigration matter, that it will go through your office. I don't know if that, does that seem to address that?
Yeah, I did see your email, Ms. Palchak. And I have sketched out, I think, some language that I think will address your concerns.
Okay.
And I can get with you and share that with the board.
Okay. Ms. Evans asked, so that's something I'm looking at, perhaps others. But, thank you. Is that a follow-on? No, because that's an amendment to the, that would be to the MOU. So, that would be, so, I guess it's language amendment. Are you in communication? Then, I guess if we're providing language amendments, then they are going, I don't want to be told...
We'll need to collaborate with the FCPD with any language amendments so that we're not voting on a different document than the Board of Supervisors is anticipating.
I'm okay with that. I don't want to be told I cannot provide amendments because we're collaborating. But if they are simple amendments, should I be working with Mr. Foster and with Lori? Because is that the, what's the process?
No, I would suggest you work directly with Mr. Foster. And this amendment that you're suggesting is an obligation on FCPS. So, it seems to me that when we're imposing obligations on FCPS, we have a little bit more flexibility because we're taking ownership of it. Where we are limited is when we impose obligations on an organization that we don't have that same type of flexibility over.
Okay. But we're comfortable doing it here because it is...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
It has been a two-way street of collaboration with the FCPD and with us, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
So, the proposal to remove the word "cultural conflicts," is that something, how, just removing the word "cultural" from that "conflicts" phrase, that's from the MOU. So, how are we handling that?
So, I think, as I look back on the meetings that we had in the past, that may have been an oversight because I know that that was part of the discussion earlier where we had language that referred to times gone by when there were the different conflicts that were tied to culture at that time that aren't really necessary now. So, I can quickly do a follow-up on that.
Yes, that would be a deletion. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Ms. McLaughlin?
Well, that was very helpful clarification. And, you know, I appreciate what Mr. Moon said earlier that, yes, all of this work tonight, the focus has been on this MOU. And, yeah, you know, we all got excited that there's other things we'd like to continuously improve in our discipline practices. So, I will confer with Mr. Smith and my colleagues on where it relates directly to this MOU. But as the last one I referenced earlier about arrests that happen on school grounds, that's an example of where I'm, I think we have to make sure that if there's any changes to that from a, from a legal FERPA and privacy aspect, we would need to get that language changed before we vote on it. Because that, that isn't something that we can, we can have voted on and then we just have to kind of say to the supervisors and the police department, oh, yeah, by the way, technically, if we're not careful with the way we do an arrest, we'll have broken the law and revealed sense of information about a minor. So, Mr. Foster, is that an example of where we probably need to look at sending you something first thing tomorrow and you'd look at it and say, yeah, I think that is something we might want to let FCPD know? I mean, I think that's the part I want, just make sure we have clarity tonight before we leave here, is where we think this is a legal issue, are we racing the clock to get the language to Mr. Foster, him to do that legal review? the clock to get the language to Mr. Foster, him to do that legal review, and then is his office and Marty, who's taking over to FCPD and saying, yeah, through the board's, you know, reflection, this is something we think we have to change? I'm just trying to understand what we're going to find ourselves on Thursday.
So John, I will coordinate those efforts tomorrow, which is where I was going with any amendments for language. We would want to make sure that we get agreement on both sides with the language, and it's not an approval. It's more working in collaboration to ensure that we have the same language going forward.
Mr. Wilson.
So just to clarify, so there were changes that were made sort of immediately prior to this meeting, some of them, I think, fairly significant. Are, are changes to what we've reviewed, will they all be presented in the form of amendments? Or will there be changes that are going to be made that will just be incorporated because you've had follow-on discussions between FCPS and the police? Yeah. Because we've talked about people bringing amendments, and we've talked about seemingly changes that maybe didn't sound like amendments. I'm just trying to understand, maybe like Ms. McLaughlin, what, maybe, I mean, are we really going to have amendments? Or are we just going to have a revised document that we're going to look at?
Well, there are changes that we can make that are the one-word changes that I think we had some consensus around the table. Shall, cultural, those are pieces that we could certainly look at. And then there are other pieces that I think that the board would want to have a further discussion on, perhaps at the board table around amendments. But I think, again, we have some consensus on minor one-word changes versus changing something that's much larger when we're thinking about the legal language around student arrests. So we would want to confer a little bit tomorrow to figure out how we want to move forward with some of those changes.
To that end, if it turns out that Mr. Foster, after he gets some much-needed sleep, looks at it, realizes that that section doesn't effectively capture that there's a legal requirement to protect the identity of a minor, why do we have to then go and debate that? Like, I, just like everything else, I would think if Mr. Foster reviews it and says, you know, you're right, we didn't think about that, and so he just amends it based that keeps us legally compliant, and they run by FCPD because legally, we're going to have a responsibility to that area.
Mr. Moon, followed by Mr. Wilson.
As far as process is concerned, this is how I see it. Superintendent and Chief, Chief of Police Department have worked on, worked on MOU and then brought us the language mutually agreed upon thus far. So any change going forward, unless something is very obvious to anyone's mind, that we need to have, we need to, you know, our acting, acting superintendent that will have to have a conversation with the Chief of, you know, Chief of Police to see whether he will agree to the change. But this is a language agreed upon thus far. So, I mean, my suggestion is even for simple language change such as, you know, deleting, deleting cultural conflicts while changing will to shall.
We will still.
I don't, I don't think the board members were, you know, I don't, you know, they will get the unanimous support, in my mind, from board members. That can be quickly done at the table. Just, you know, just bring them as, as amendments.
Okay.
Because we, I cannot, I cannot prejudge at this point how the Chief of Police will react between now and Thursday. So let's just plan on, plan on bringing those amendments. You know, we don't have to, we don't have to, you know, discuss hours and hours.
So, Mr. Moon, in that guidance, you would say, for my example, I can confer offline with Mr. Foster, Division Counsel. If he says, I, you know, legally, there's a value add to that change, that amendment about protecting the identity of a minor in a school arrest, I can bring that amendment and the rationale and the support, and the board supports it, we're bringing it back to Chief of Police, saying, there's a legal component here and the board passed this?
So, so if you let me finish. If you let me finish, obviously, every, you know, any one of us can bring whatever amendment we want to bring, right? And it will require seven votes to pass. Given that, given that, you know, Mr. Smith has heard what he has said today for the last three hours, he will certainly go back, I'm sure, between even now and Thursday night, just to have a conversation with the Chief, Chief of Police, that, you know, I heard these things from, you know, our, our board members. So what do you think? He'll probably hear from, from the chief. And, and, and I don't know whether he'll be able to, you know, report back to us before Thursday night or not, but I don't want to assume at this point that, that whatever those changes we may propose will be agreed to by the Chief of Police. So let's just do the amendment process.
I understand. I only wanted the clarity on if there's a legal aspect of this MOU that it turns out we're violating the law unless we change the language, then this isn't just a matter of we like better language. It's if we don't change the language, we're violating the law. And that's the part that I would.
I'm sure Mr. Foster will look into that, and he will.
Excuse me, can I make a suggestion? There are certain minor tweaks that have all been discussed that I think it would be best if Mr. Smith would coordinate those changes in advance of Thursday night so that we have as close to, as close to possible, a final document on Thursday night. Because this document has already been posted to the Board of Supervisors for an administrative decision. So for us to continuously change tonight and then change again on Thursday night, it makes it more difficult. So if there are certain things that this group here tonight can agree to already that we would like to see changed, I would suggest that Mr. Smith take those back to the chief so that we have as close to final of a document as possible. And the focus on Thursday night should be on those follow-on motions which are focused on ensuring that we have greater transparency and instruction to both FCPS and FCPD personnel in what we want to see in training, in continuous improvement, in other areas such as our SRNR and instructions to the hearings office. So along those lines, if we would go to the draft amendments or just the slight changes in language that we've talked about already, we have the language of changing will to shall in the training section. And so if people are supportive of that language, can we see a show of hands? Great. Thank you. The next one is to remove on page 12, cultural, so that it's conflict only? All those in favor? Okay.
So I have a small one word then for my area that's regarding the law with the arrests. It should just say, arrests that must occur during school hours on school grounds shall comply with all applicable laws, and then coordinated with school administrators. I mean, that, that, it just says, shall be coordinated with school administrators to minimize potential disruption. And it's not just a potential disruption, we have to comply with applicable laws related to protecting the identity of a minor. So.
Mr. Foster?
I mean, I, you know, we will, of course, share this with the Fairfax County Police Department. I would be shocked if they had a problem saying, you know, agreeing to a provision says they're going to comply with the law. So, you know, we certainly can share that with.
Right. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, we've now approved two minor word changes, and I'm just asking my colleagues to support that minor word change, which is, we want any arrests that occur on school grounds to comply with all applicable laws.
Could you just read one more time exactly where, is it page 18, correct?
Yes, page 18.
And which, which line?
The second sentence.
Second sentence.
So it says, arrests that must occur during school hours or on school grounds shall, and you would insert. Should.
Shall be in accordance.
Shall be in accordance with all applicable laws. And then it, the second part is, and coordinated through the school administrators, or the school administrator. So it's just saying, shall comply, shall comply with all applicable laws, and coordinated, is, that's already there. Shall apply, so you're just inserting shall apply to all applicable laws.
And the rest of the sentence remains.
The rest stays the same.
I think, all those in favor? Fully supported. Great, thank you. Ms., Mr. Wilson, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. I guess along those same lines, since we're going to make small changes tonight here on page 18, the last paragraph before physical intervention by school resource officers, second sentence, says routine rule that can be handed, handled administratively. I think that should be routine rules.
Yes.
With an S. So we could make that administrative change as well. And I, I guess as a matter of process, Madam Chair, I guess, I guess what I hear from you is, we're going to make small changes tonight, but there will be no sort of real-time amending of this document on Thursday?
No, I didn't say that. I said that we should limit any real-time amendments to those that are absolutely essential, and that it would be better to get as much agreement in, in advance because it has to be coordinated across two agencies, FCPS and FCPD, and two boards. And so to, to accommodate the need for training in early August, we should do our best work and really look at Thursday night to the best of our ability towards follow-on motions for clarity in how this document will be executed rather than in wordsmithing the document.
Yeah, and I actually, I think I agree with that. The document itself has been worked out between our superintendent and the, the police chief, and will continue, right? These changes, it just was said, we'll bring them back and make sure that they are acceptable to FCPS Superintendent and Chief Frostler. So I guess my feeling is, is that it really should be almost a clean document that we have an up or down vote on, and then with follow-on amendments. If we, if there's something that we would like followed on and we approve the MOU, then, then rather than trying to make, you know, line-by-line amendments potentially at the table, that maybe that's something that would be appropriate in this case. Because we've really, the superintendent has the authority, we gave him the authority to negotiate this agreement, which he's been doing diligently for a year, apparently. And, and now we have this, this, this final form, I guess, that was finalized a few minutes before the meeting, and we're going to go to Thursday on it. So I guess my feeling is, as a matter of process, this is, this is about board work, and the superintendent is looking for us to ratify the entry of this, entrance into this document. But this document is really between FCPS, Dr. Braybrand, and the Chief of Police.
You are correct, Mr. Wilson. So before we close out tonight, are there any additional comments or changes in the actual text that you feel are critical to be able to support this MOU on Thursday night? And that cannot be addressed in a follow-on motion or in guidance and how it would be implemented?
So are you saying that the amendment I was working on has to happen now or forever hold its peace?
No, I, what I'm saying.
Okay, it's very late.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, if it can be done in the context of an, a follow-on motion of how it's executed, or if there is an amendment that you're planning on making, please make it, give us clarity as to what it is going to be so that the discussion between FCPD and FCPS can occur.
As much lead time as possible is helpful.
Do I need to do that again? Or, I mean, I think I gave information and I will work with Mr. Foster. I guess that's what I'm asking. Do I need to say that again? Okay.
No, we, we have that.
You have that. Okay, just clarifying. Thank you.
Anything else, folks? Okay. Thank you for your very hard work tonight. I know it's been a long evening, but it's greatly appreciated, and I think we've had a very productive session. This meeting is now closed. Adjourned.